All right, let's call the November meeting of the Falls Township Planning Commission to order. Please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Call the roll, please. Colin Henderson. Here. John Henney.
Here.
Edward Crowe. Here. Mary Louzcheck.
Absent.
Brian Binney.
Here. All right, we have a quorum. The first item on our agenda is Mission BBQ, 630 to 636 Commerce Boulevard, Fairless Hills, Tax Parcel 13-003-036-007, a waiver of land development for allocation of space.
I'm sorry, we didn't get the first part of what you were saying. Are we okay to start here?
You're ready to go.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Frank DiAndrea. I'm here on behalf of Mission BBQ, and we have several others that are on this call with us as well. We have Rod Sullivan, who is General Counsel for Mission BBQ, Alan Hamm, who is the Architect for Mission BBQ, and Kevin Cross, Regional Director of Operations for the northeast part of the country for Mission BBQ, and Anthony DePrinzio, who is with my company, Forest Grove, as we are the construction management team that will be building the project. So, we are here tonight as requesting a waiver of land development. We're talking about the Pier One building that is currently vacant. Mission BBQ is looking to come in and open up a restaurant in half of that building, and the other half is yet to be determined whether it will be a retail space or another tenant that will be coming in, and that's still being worked on with the Real Estate Department. So, our team here is, you know, I guess before we get too deep into this, we want to be respectful of your time. Kevin Cross from Mission BBQ is able to answer any questions or anything like that about Mission BBQ. We're not sure if you're familiar with who they are. They do have a few locations within our area. Be happy to discuss a little bit about who Mission BBQ is, or if you're already familiar with them.
Yeah, we're fine. If you'd just like to, if you have Joe Jones's review letter for Jones Engineering?
We do.
If there's anything in there that you're going to request a waiver from, if you could just touch on that and everything else that you're going to comply with, we'll just go right through it.
Right, very easy. Yep, so Tim Woodrow's our civil engineer. They had a call with him, with Joe earlier today, to discuss these items because Woodrow's office did not be on the call. And basically, the crux of the conversation is we will comply and be more than happy to work with your staff and with the engineer to address all of these concerns, and we do not see anything on this list that is something that we are not able to accommodate and make sure that we meet your requirements.
Great. Is there any questions from the board?
No.
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 Is there any public comment? No public comment. Thank you. No public comments, so I'll entertain a motion. I'd like to make a motion to accept the waiver of land development allocation of space to divide existing building into two tenants. Mission BBQ, Oxford Valley, PA LLC, 636 Commerce Boulevard, TMP number 13-001-036-007, Zoned SC Shopping Center District, Township of Falls, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, JEA, project number LD21-23, date of plan, November 12, 1965.
Can I make amendment to that?
1965.
Yeah, I was reading right off it. I guess it's 2021. Sorry. I'd just like to make a quick amendment to that. The tax parcel is 13-003-036-007.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Henney. Pull the board, please. Colin Henderson.
Yes.
John Henney.
Yes.
Edward Crowe. Yes. Brian Binney.
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Next item on our agenda is Stalwart-Marsville Lot Line Change, 2300 South Pennsylvania Avenue, Marsville, PA. Tax parcels 13-047-097 and 13-047-097-001, minor subdivision.
Robert Gunlock for the applicant. Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Thank you. This is an application that is a lot line change essentially to move 10 acres of land from parcel 97-1 to 97. The RFC property sits on 20 acres. They have about 10 acres of excess land. They're selling that to their neighbor. We're not creating any new lots, and this application involves no new improvements whatsoever. It's just moving a lot line between two parcels over so that one property becomes 10 acres larger and the other property becomes 10 acres smaller. We completed a plan to show that both parcels are still remain in full compliance with the zoning ordinance. We received a letter from the township engineer dated November 3. I would characterize the comments as simply cleanup notes and clarification. All the comments are, we'll comply. We did even revise and resubmit to him by November 16 to show the township engineer how we could address all those comments. After discussion, I understand there's a few cleanup wording that we need to do on the note, and the solicitor needs to review and approve, but everything is, we'll comply. Again, no new improvements. If new improvements are proposed on any of these properties, they would be required to go through the land development approval process. I have Yosef Portnoy, engineer from Colliers, on the line if there's any questions about it, but we are here tonight to ask for a recommendation of approval for preliminary final lot line change.
Is there questions from the board?
No. No, good. Well, so, I was not in favor of the previous application that came in for the warehouse, and so I'm not going to be in favor of this application just because I don't believe that's appropriate there, the way they had it designed. So, if there's any public comment?
No public comment.
There's no public comment, then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion not to recommend for a minor subdivision application, line lot change, Stalwart-Marsville LLC, 2300 Pennsylvania Avenue, Marsville, PA, TMP number 13-47-97 and 13-47-97-1. I'll second.
Pull the board, please.
Can we make a comment before you poll for a vote?
Go ahead.
Again, this is Rob Gunlock. Again, for the record, the plan is in full compliance with the ordinance. We're not proposing any improvements on either property. It involves a sale of 10 acres to the RFC, which they're going to use to further their business. I understand that some planning commission members may not support the redevelopment of the adjacent parcel as previously proposed, but I'd submit to you that's an application for another day, and you're certainly free to vote that, but this one's in full compliance with the ordinance and certainly looking for support to move forward as both property owners are allowed to do to shift the property line like any other property owner in the township, and ask you to take that in consideration when casting your vote.
Motion's made and seconded. Pull the board, please. Colin Henderson.
Yes.
Edward Crowe. No. I'm sorry. John Henney.
No.
Wait a second. So, you made a motion to deny, so a yes is the...
I'm sorry, yes, sorry.
Yes is a motion to deny, just so everybody's clear.
Brian Binney.
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
What was the vote there? I got confused with the yes and the no's.
There's three, three yeses and one no.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, next item on our agenda is item number three, North Point Keystone Trade Center Phase Two, Tax Parcel 13-51-001, a minor subdivision, preliminary final land development for three new buildings, Buildings Four, Five, and Six.
Good evening. Mike McGinnis from Begley Carlin here on behalf of North Point. I believe we also have Greg Glitzer, Tim Casey, Eric Place, and I think Jeremy Michael is present in the meeting room tonight. We are here for the development and the beginning of what we've labeled to be Phase Two of North Point's development project. The commission will recall that Phase One consisted of approval for Buildings One, Two, and Three, and with that, some associated and separate subdivisions primarily pertaining to the creation of new tax parcels for the existing lease areas within the site. What we're here for tonight hopefully is to secure approval for three approximately 1 million square foot buildings, which we're labeling as Buildings Four, Five, and Six. All three of these buildings, as you can see on the plans prepared by Gilmore and Associates, are the same size. I believe it's 1,035,703 square feet. The particular location is more towards the interior central portion of the park, and if, I don't know if we have access to sharing our screen, but certainly I believe the planning commission has the plans and can view...
All 118 of them.
If you can dig through the sheets, you could find where it's depicted. It's presently a portion of what we've been describing as the mother parcel, the 13-51-001 parcel. Before we get into the waivers, I would suggest briefly, it would be worth hearing from Jeremy to describe kind of what this Phase Two is, sort of where we've come and where we're going to go from here, and then one of the Gilmore members will do a brief overview of the overall site design, and then we have the waivers that we've previously identified in an updated list of waivers that we have generated as a result of Mr. Jones's review letter. So, Jeremy, if you could, just update the planning commission, please.
Yeah, thanks, Mike, and thanks, everybody, for your time this evening. As Mike said, I'm Jeremy Michael with North Point Development. We've been in front of the board a few times now representing Keystone Trade Center. So, one side, we started demo mass excavation of Phase One for the first two approved buildings on the site. We're making a lot of progress on the site, and we're happy to say we've seen even more activity in terms of the tenant interest in Keystone Trade Center. So, we're here tonight, as Mike mentioned, to present Phase Two, the development at KTC. Phase Two is three buildings, all just more than a million square feet. As Mike had mentioned, we'll go over the, Gilmore will present the review letter and all the requested waivers, and then we'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thanks, and I don't know between Greg and Eric and Tim if one of you just wants to do a, you know, a bit of a rundown of what we're actually proposing for the planning commission here.
I'll give a quick overview. As Mike stated, this is a major subdivision of three total lots. Each lot is approximately 2.5 million square feet. The overall Phase Two is about 12 million with a limited disturbance, 12 million square feet. Building Five sits in the general location of the U.S. Steel Headquarters, the existing building, and that being said, there's going to be some shifting around of the roads, internal roads, to make this overall subdivision work. We have a substantial amount of stormwater management structures going in, and that's pretty much the gist of it. This is in the general location of the Gamesia site as well.
And then, if the planning commission is all right with it, we can do a rundown of the waivers we're presently seeking, and then certainly open it up for questions.
Proceed, please.
All right, thank you. The first waiver would be from 19131A, and that is a new waiver request with respect to a minimum cartway width of 36 feet. We're proposing 32 feet for our cartway width. This is primarily designed to reduce the onsite improvements necessary for our post-construction stormwater management plans, and then I believe Mr. Jones's letter addresses this, but we, of course, will provide vehicle turning diagrams to Mr. Jones's office to make sure that the smaller centerline radius provides adequate maneuverability. The second waiver request would be from 19132A2, which provides for a requirement of a minimum radi for horizontal curves being with Collector Street, 600 feet. We are, again, requesting a waiver for a radius of less than 600 feet, and that primarily pertains to the realignment and crossing of utilities for the Southport Road. When you have that in the railroad, it requires a smaller centerline radius. And again, just like I indicated with the prior comment, the vehicle turning diagrams are going to be provided to Mr. Jones's office to make sure that the smaller centerline radius provides the adequate maneuverability that we're seeking for the site. The third waiver request would be from 19134D1 with respect to site triangles and street intersections. We are, just to be clear, meeting the requirements from PennDOT's standpoint with respect to acceptable site distance standards. We're just not technically meeting the 530-foot requirement for Collector Streets and 500-foot requirement for industrial driveways, as is laid out in Falls ordinance. Certainly, we will ensure that we have adequate clear site triangles on the site, and any information that needs to be provided to Mr. Jones or Remington and Vernick, we will certainly do so before the supervisors' meeting. The fourth waiver is from 19134F, and that pertains to the intersection interval of secondary streets being not less than 125 feet from centerline to centerline of the next nearest intersection point, and this is really with respect to Ben Fairless and Middle Drive, basically by the MM Metal Site. The intersection is approximately 99 feet. I know that was a question in Mr. Jones's letter to provide details as to what that actual distance would be, and it's 99 feet from Solar Drive centerline at the intersection with Middle Drive. And again, Eric or Tim or Greg can chime in as to why that's necessary, but my understanding is it's due to the revised layout and the site functionality that we can't meet the 125-foot requirement. The fifth waiver is from 19136D, and that is a waiver request that requires all driveways to have curving, and we're requesting a waiver again from that section. I think we have in prior iterations of our proposals, and this is specifically along what we've labeled driveway A, and that's being done so that the driveway can have adequate sheet flow into the adjacent stormwater management basin, which we're proposing and depicting on our plans. We have four more waivers, I'm almost there, we have nine total. We have waiver requests from 191521B3B1, and maybe I can group these together, 191521B3B2 The first two have to do with steep slope disturbance, particularly the first waiver is disturbing steep slopes that are 15% to 25%, and the second waiver is a requirement of 80, sorry, 85% of areas with steep slopes greater than 25%. This is strictly pertaining to the man-made steep slopes, which are going to be disturbed and removed as part of the construction of the warehouse buildings Four, Five, and Six by the canal. We have the third, I guess it's technically eight, but the third in the succession of waivers that I outlined, is a woodlands disturbance. This is pertaining specifically to Building Four, where we would be disturbing the woodlands on site, and as Mr. Jones's review letter indicates, as part of the master site agreement, we are going to be replacing those woodlands, but we're requesting permission to disturb them with respect to Building Four. And then the final waiver request is 19178C2, and that's the existing features waiver, which we've requested for prior iterations of this project. So, those are the nine waiver requests. A few of those are updates to what we had originally submitted. The rest of the plan certainly, I think given the extent of it, will be revised and resubmitted before we move forward, certainly for any presentation with the supervisors, but we're hoping to secure recommended approval tonight to keep this moving, the planning commission, and look forward to getting these buildings built and more tenants into the site. So, with that, I would be happy to open it up for any questions.
I have a couple. Excuse me. So, the area of what used to be, I guess, Gamaeza Drive that's being relocated, there's a portion of the driveway, it appears to me, and you correct me if I'm wrong, that is staying so that Sika can access their garage. Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
So, I would just like to make sure, it seems to me that that ends pretty short of their garage or from their driveway, and I just want to make sure that they have the ability to maneuver their trucks in and out of there without causing problems to them. I mean, they were in there for a long time, and they've had rights to those roads, and I don't want them to get jammed up because of this. So, we can just make a look, take a look at that, and we can make sure that they can maneuver in and out of there without being, you know, without them being impacted negatively. Also, if you read the Bucks County Planning Commission letter, they pointed out some things about the trees, the trees that you picked out, and also if there's any thought given to, you know, green roofs or alternative energies or things like that, if maybe you can answer those questions, if there's been any thought or if there's any proposals for that.
Yeah, I would just say, you know, as a corporate consideration, we've been exploring solar on the roof and trying to figure out how to accommodate, so we've engaged with a consultant, kind of outside, third-party consultant, to help us review options for rooftop leases for the facilities. So, certainly not ready to make any, you know, commitments or promises on that front, but we have proceeded with engaging a consultant and looking at various design options that would be able to accommodate in the future.
If one of your tenants, proposed tenants, were willing to do that, would you work with them?
Yeah, we've actually gotten a few requests already in terms of the RFPs that we've seen from the brokers, you know, from the tenant activity, and, you know, I would say a handful of them so far have inquired about solar. So, yeah, I think depending on what type of user it is and what type of electric load, we'll probably end up and see more and more of that kind of a request.
And I know this board has expressed, you know, concerned, not concerned, but commented about public utilities down, or public transportation down there, and the planning commission also has brought that up as a point, and as, at this point, has there been any conversations with any public transportation agencies?
Yeah, we've, we've started that dialogue, so we've reached out to set the, kind of the feedback we've gotten so far has been, you know, when you build it, we will come. So, it's a chicken and egg, you know, they want to see the ridership before they'll commit to, you know, public transportation, and, you know, we certainly understand and appreciate that, but we're definitely incentivized to try to figure out public transportation, you know, we think that making sure that we have the ability to get that type of labor pool onto the site, like into Keystone, is important for our development, so definitely high on our priority list as well.
And I'll just go back, just from my experience, too, some of the future tenants will be very vocal and work with other areas. I mean, I helped launch the Amazon in Robbinsville, New Jersey when they did it, and Amazon was very vocal about getting public transportation, even if it's second-party, not directly a public utility company, like A1 Limousine would bring them and then take them to Hamilton. So, there's a lot of, I know we can work through some of those things to get that in place.
And my last comment is, I guess, myself and I think some of the other board members thought at this stage of the Phase Two, we would see some kind of overall layout for the roads for the whole entire property, and I guess we're seeing part of it, but we're not seeing all of it, so I guess we're wondering when we can see that.
Yeah, we've actually have a couple of different iterations of the overall master plan. One of the challenges that we're currently working through is with some of the tenant relocations. So, we've kind of laid out a, you know, proposed site plan that we think best utilizes or, you know, maximizes the build-out of the park, but it also is kind of making some assumptions with the existing constraints we have with some of the tenants on site currently. So, we're working with them to try to get them relocated. Morton Sol is a good example of a tenant that, you know, they're actually in two locations on site, so working with them to try to consolidate their operation into one building, but because of that, we haven't, we haven't been able to, like, provide an updated master plan that shows all the kind of tenant reshuffling. Happy to present to you guys kind of where we're at today based on Phase One, Phase Two, but there'll be a lot of holes in kind of what we have today versus what we hope to accomplish in the future.
Jeremy, can I make a suggestion there, too, is perhaps as part of one of the, you know, we've obviously made a number of presentations over the course of this year to the planning commission, and have been appreciative of all the support that the planning commission has provided. In one of our upcoming presentations, perhaps even if it's a working draft, as part of that, we can just provide almost as a, an informal update, what we've been working through so that the, you know, planning commission can get their eyes on that. But something that I, you know, I think would be probably appreciated and valued, even with the understanding that it's still, it's still fungible and not set in stone for the reasons that you've discussed.
Yeah, like I said, we're happy to share that with you guys.
That would definitely be helpful. Thank you.
And the one thing I'll go with what Brian was speaking towards, so traffic and rooting through, it's coming up to that wonderful time of the year where there are situations, I mean, my one more concern is the proximity of these buildings being one, is working with it, when we get, there's an issue in a building or a power failure or something along those lines, or just in all the staffing in the buildings, you can have a line of tractor-trailers out for days going through. So, I know we're doing some waivers where reducing the size of the roads and all, which makes sure there's proper egress there, because I've been in a few situations where you have 36, 53 footers deep, because there's only one way in to some of these buildings where all three of these buildings might be where they have security on them, so it's one way in, one way out. So, you're coming up on them, and they don't egress through another way, just through security. It's going to be Amazon, it could be Target, whatever it is, you have a gatehouse where security goes through, and if something shuts down and they're closing down that gatehouse for the day, I just want to make sure when we send those tractor-trailers deep, depending on who the client is, it could be any of them, you're not going to block the other entrances. That's my one concern that I have, just with egress and flow, to see the way the travel will go. And just the other thing, I just want to make sure, as Brian talked about, about public utilities, is I've seen a lot, I've worked a lot of these buildings, and a lot of them have for the fire suppression system and/or the generators, most of these companies want them. Is there going to be natural gas for the generators? I'd much rather have natural gas generators there versus diesel, and with that on top, some of having, or you can have makeup tanks for the fire spread system if we're not going to be able to keep up with the gallons per minute needed, the flow needed. So, just with that proximity, some of the concerned, not concerns, just observations I have just to make sure we go there, and then again, if there's some of these, some of the Amazons of the world and everything else now are building, buildings very close to each other in some of these complexes now, where there's sort centers, fulfillment centers, Target's doing the same thing, where you'll pull one, you'll get a jockey truck to come in there. they'll pull from one building to the next building. Just want to make sure we have the proper resources there. They're going to put diesel tanks in and fueling stations for those jockey trucks and everything else, just to make sure our ducts are in the road. Because I think we have the potential in this area to be one of the best because we have some experience from other areas around that puts some of these small things in.
Sure. No, I certainly appreciate those comments and all things that we're definitely sensitive to. You know, North Point, I think our portfolio is up over a hundred million square feet now. And we've certainly seen a lot of the same things and issues that you pointed out. So there's a lot to unpack or unravel. I don't know if you want to address all individually, but...
Oh, no, just more of a common observation, just when you do the plans and how the road you're actually going to run, there's some of the things I'll be looking for just to make sure we have proper egress when we do have that oh crap moment where you have trucks at the door and just make sure the other buildings can have specifics.
Definitely.
That's a technical term. In case you don't know what it is. How about, any other comments from the board? Mr. Henderson?
No.
How about, are we, we'll comply with the Remington-Vernick letter? Have you guys seen that?
Yes, and I, and I think where McMahon is working with Remington and Vernick, and there's going to be ongoing conversations both with Remington and Vernick and with PennDOT, probably before we proceed in front of the supervisors, I would assume.
Is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Mr. Jones, do you have anything you'd like to add?
One addition, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, and that is that we will get Remington and Vernick the updated waiver list from tonight's meeting and work with them and the applicant through the planned revisions before the project moves to the supervisor.
All right, thank you. So... Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
You're relaying to this board that if we were so inclined to give you a preliminary and final approval tonight that this plan will be cleaned up before it gets to supervisors?
Yes.
So that we're not handing them an eleven-page review letter?
No, we will not be proceeding without resubmitting and working through some issues with Joe and with Remington and Vernick. Yes, you have my assurance on that.
So I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. After reviewing the Remington-Vernick letter dated October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, and the Bucks County Planning Commission letter dated November ninth, two thousand twenty-one, I recommend preliminary and final land development for North Point Phase Two, Buildings Four, Five, and Six, One Ben Fairless Drive, Tax map parcel thirteen dash zero five one dash zero zero one, zoned MPM, Township of Falls, Bucks County, JEA Project Number LD twenty-one dash twenty-one. With these waivers, one ninety-one, thirty-one A, one ninety-one, thirty-two A two, one ninety-one, thirty-four B one, one ninety-one, thirty-four F, one ninety-one, thirty-six D, one ninety-one, fifty-two, one, B three, B one, one ninety-one, fifty-two, one, B three, B two, one ninety-one, fifty-two, one, B four, B two, and one ninety-one, seventy-eight, C two.
Is that motion also to include compliance with the remainder of the comments on the Jones Engineer Letter of November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second.
Hold board, please.
Colin Henderson?
Yes. John Henny?
Yes.
Ed Crow?
Yes.
Brian Binney?
Yes.
And thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Next item on our agenda is Civ Ambulances, North Olds Boulevard and Lincoln Highway, Fairless Hills, PA, tax parcel thirteen dash zero one seven dash zero one two. Conditional use to allow the applicant to build and maintain an ambulance service facility.
Evening. Mike McGinnis here on behalf of Civ Ambulances. I also have Sergio Civ and Vince Fiorbani, who's the project engineer, participating remotely. If I can, I'm going to give a bit of a background here. It's, I'll admit that I haven't represented any ambulance sales companies before, so I'm assuming the planning commission would also like to hear a little bit about this operation and what's intended at the site. So I'm going to give a bit of background about the business and then some of the items that came up at zoning. And then I'm going to turn it over to Vince to do a bit of a walk through of the plan. The subject property is thirteen dash seventeen dash twelve. It's located at the intersection in North Olds Boulevard and Lincoln Highway, zoned HC. It's the parcel which shares the parking lot with the, what is now the Social Security Building. It's approximately three point six three acres. And as I indicated, even though there isn't a structure on our property, it is partially improved with the existing parking lot and does share a parking field with the neighboring property. And there are, as you might expect, reciprocal easement agreements and parking agreements that are in place with that landowner. The proposal that we have is to build an approximately thirty thousand square foot structure, which will be utilized for ambulance sales and then also some ambulance, but all label repair and updating. The, there was a prior approval, which Vince can get into a little bit more, back in two thousand, which shows a substantially similar building envelope on the parcel. About thirty thousand square feet with the building setback seventy-five feet from Lincoln Highway, like our proposal is depicting. And it's the same size and general character of what we have shown on our plan. I think it's worthwhile to go over the process here. This is a conditional use application. And what we're doing is we submitted to the zoning hearing board to secure two-dimensional variances, one for the parking setback and one for the building setback. But if we receive the conditional use approval, recommended approval hopefully from the planning commission and also the approval from the supervisors, we will then do the full land development, plan submission. So all of the documentation and the nuts and bolts that you would expect from a land development standpoint, where we would have the associated review letters and it would be back in front of you to discuss will complies and waivers. Hopefully, that will all come approximately, you know, six months from now. This is primarily focused on, you know, what the business is and the proposed use of the parcel. So again, this is, this is, there hasn't been a, there's not an ambulance sales category in the code ordinances in terms of a use designation. What was determined to be, you know, most akin and most appropriate to what we're proposing is what's outlined in the section, which is two oh nine dash twenty-three D five, which pertains to the sales of automobiles, but specifically RVs and boats and sort of unique vehicles like that. If it was a typical automobile dealership, it would be just permitted by right and we would just be in front of you from a land development standpoint. But since it's not a typical automobile dealership, it has to go through the conditional use process. Civ Ambulances operates presently in a location off Big Oak Road in Langhorne. That site, and Sergio can go into this if the planning commission would like to hear more about it, is smaller than this property. And we're anticipating approximately doubling the size of the building to thirty thousand square feet, give or take, and adding approximately seven employees, bringing the employee count to fifteen. That's what we're estimating on this site. So the Langhorne operation has a, presently a smaller employee ratio. And fortunately Civ has been a very successful business and they've outgrown their operations and they're trying to bring that business to Falls Township. Civ sells ambulances to a variety of EMS companies. Most of those purchases are done online. There is not a, as you can imagine, a very large retail component when it comes to ambulance sales. Not many people are coming in off the street to purchase ambulances. So even though we have thirty parking spaces depicted on the plan for customer parking, there's never going to be a scenario where even half of those parking spaces are utilized. The primary process is the ambulances come into the property. They are typically dismounted and any upgrades, you know, paints or paint or repairs, if necessary, are done entirely in the interior of the building. Then they would be remounted and listed on their website and sold again to those EMS companies. Because this came up at the zoning hearing board, I would like to state, the ambulances which are for sale are kept in a clean and orderly manner in the parking lot. They are, they would take up, you know, each ambulance would take up a single space. There's not a situation where there's going to be ambulance parks that are strewn about. The parking field would not be in disrepair. They are parked in good condition and in one parking space. The hours of operation, because again, this was discussed, we're very aware of the residential community that's to the rear of the property. They are going to be approximately eight AM to five PM. I think that that makes it more cohesive with the residential properties to the rear than the other commercial uses which would be permitted in the HC zoning district. You're not going to have nighttime operations. And as you might expect, another benefit, I think, for this particular business is there is significantly less traffic that would be generated at this, at a three point six acre commercial site than a likely other commercial proposal at a location like this. There were two neighbors who appeared at the zoning hearing board and voiced concerns. And I don't want to speak for them if they're here, but I do want to just address or attempt to address proactively a couple of the concerns that were raised. We're obviously trying to be very candid and upfront about our operations to be good neighbors at the property. And that includes an understanding that there is a potential, you know, painting component when you are refinishing the ambulances. My client made reference at the zoning hearing board that he just purchased actually a new paint booth for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We can supply certainly to the township if it's desired prior to appearance at the supervisors, the specs of the paint booth, but it's state-of-the-art. It filters, removes ninety-nine point eight four percent of contaminants and is compliant with the particular agencies and codes that you would expect. So that's, again, specs that we're more than happy to provide if Mr. Jones or someone at the township believes that that would be appropriate to review. There is a, another issue that came up, I would say one of the bigger concerns as well, pertain to noise and specifically any compressors or sirens at the location. So really quickly with both of those, the sirens are tested, first of all, of course, entirely to the interior of the building. But the tests would occur fewer than one time a day and the average test lasts less than two seconds. So this is not a situation where there's going to be any regularity, frequency, et cetera, of testing. My client also has a siren cover to additionally mute the sound. So it's completely to the interior. It's tested one or fewer times a day and the test period is for approximately two seconds. So it's not a situation that is going to be causing active disturbance for any of the surrounding parcels. The other item is the compressors. Again, we have the specs that we can provide, but the average decibel with the compressor, sixty-eight decibels, which is the equivalent approximately of an office level noise. So that is not anything that's going to impact or be heard off the site. The final item that I would address or try to address proactively, just to bring it to the planning commission's attention, is lighting, was a question that came up about whether there's going to be any light pollution that would impact any of the residents to the rear. My understanding is the property presently is backlit. I had discussed at the zoning hearing board, one of the benefits, again, to reiterate my prior comment about this use, is the hours of operation are different than what a typical commercial use might be at this location. But of course, we will be submitting lighting plans to the township if we end up going through the land development process like we hope. And there is not going to be any light pollution or spillover effects on those residential parcels. So we're more than happy to have that thoroughly reviewed and to include those residential property owners in those conversations. I made that representation at the zoning hearing board and I will reiterate it tonight. We're more than happy to have meetings that are firm or have discussions if we go through the land development process to make sure they're included in any input to the extent, of course, it's feasible or desired on their end. But that will be a, an item that will not affect the property owners. But of course, there will be adequate lighting so that it's safe. It's not going to encourage any criminality or anything on the property. And with that, if I could, I would just like to briefly turn it over to Mr. Fiorbani to do kind of a walkthrough of what we're proposing. And then we can tackle this however the planning commission would like. We have Joe's review letter. There's a list of zoning comments which we are, you know, prepared to address, but we can also open it up to conversation, whatever the preferences of the board.
Can, is your, your client, is he on the line?
He is, yes.
I guess, I guess the board and I would, myself anyway, would like to hear a little bit about the process. Like when these ambulances come in, how long are they there? How long they sit outside? You know, are they, are they going to be disassembled and then parked outside so we can get more trucks in while we're waiting for ambulances in, while we're waiting for parts? When I drive by the Big Oak Road operation, it appears that what you said to me earlier was that the ambulances all be in a parking space. And it seems like the ones that are finished being rehabbed are, but it seems like the ones in the back are just all over the place.
Sergio?
Hi, good evening. I'd like to answer any specific questions. What was the question?
What's, what's the process? Like when these ambulances come in to be restored, are they, how long are they sitting outside before they're getting restored? Are they taken apart and then the chassis are put back outside while you're waiting for parts? Where are all these, how's all this operation work?
Okay, so I'll, I'll, I'll give you an exact example of ambulance remounting. So Newtown Rescue Squad, they contacted us, their, their engine, you know, blew up, stopped working. They got ahold of us. We then provided them with the proposal, they agreed. They towed their ambulance over to us. We parked it up in our back lot until we were ready to bring it into the service shop or inside the building to where then we could dismount the body. And then so we brought it in, maybe that was a matter of, you know, three, four days or so. We brought it in, we dismounted the body and then we mounted it onto a new chassis. That may have taken three or four more days. And then it was then brought over to the assembly area of the building, which took about another, you know, week and a half to assemble the rest of the ambulance, connect all the electrical, connect all the HVAC systems, test everything, and then just get it ready for pickup. So that is a typical example of an ambulance remount. Sometimes they last longer depending on how extensive that is. If somebody, let's say, wants their ambulance body repainted, you know, that may take upwards of, you know, thirty to forty-five days. So the process just goes into the body shop and then back into mounting and then assembly and inspection. If it's just an ambulance service... If it's just an ambulance service that wants service done to their ambulance, such as, you know, Health Fleet in Philadelphia, HVAC issues, they bring it in, just like a typical auto dealership. You know, they schedule an appointment with us, they bring it in. Typically, we bring it into the service that same day and then we provide all the repairs until it's done. And then we, you know, we call them up and tell them that it's finished and it's ready for pickup. On used ambulances that we receive, whether they're trade in or that we purchase, we bring them in, we park them up in a spot, typically it's in the back. And then as we have time to bring them into service, we do, and then we do all the necessary repairs. So mostly all of the ambulances that are on our lot, on our inventory, or, you know, or maybe older looking, we try to keep that in the back lot. All of their newer trucks, we try to keep that out front as nice and neat and organized as possible.
And Sergio, one of the comments that Mr. Benny made, like, correct me if I'm wrong, did a conversation about you not having, one of the, one of the reasons why you want to relocate is you don't have the same access to parking that you could have at this site in terms of vehicle storage. So in terms of the way the Big Oak Road site is set up and how you maintain any of your vehicles there versus what we're proposing here and what we'll be diagramming hopefully through the land development process, your, I want to make sure I'm being accurate. The representation that I made earlier, which is your ambulances, whether it's, obviously when they're being worked on, they're being worked on to the interior of the structure, but when they're not being worked on at a location that would be oriented like this, they would be stored so that each ambulance is going to be parked in a space and it's not just going to be anything that's scattered throughout the site. Is that right?
That, that's correct, yeah. Right now, we're, you know, we're leasing this space. We are sharing, you know, there's four businesses on this entire industrial property, you know, and so we're, we're, we're limited to what we can do, you know, but you are correct. You know, with this new location in Falls, every ambulance is going to be nice neatly parked in one spot. And that's why we want to move.
So I assume you, you're going to have a paint booth and you're going to have a body shop. So you, you fix ambulances that have been in accidents, you, you might buy some that have been in accidents, you refer them and you sell them, correct?
Yes.
So I, I'm a member of a fire company and we had an accident with one of our fire trucks and it took six months for them to get the parts. And you can't just go to AutoZone and buy parts for these things. So is it reasonable to say that you'll have damaged vehicles parked out here?
Maybe some damaged vehicles, that's true, yeah. So if it's, if somebody calls us and it was in an accident, we'll, we'll park it up in a spot where I'm thinking it's going to be farther away from North Olds or Lincoln Highway on that side. But we're trying to arrange it in such, in such a way where it doesn't become an eyesore. But yeah, there may be an ambulance that was in an accident that we would have to keep outside.
And, and one of the items that I can state that we have discussed internally and had, we had very, very preliminary conversations, so I don't, I certainly don't want to make any misrepresentations about the neighboring business owners' positions on things. But we had discussed potentially having a portion closer to the building being, you know, having a screened fence in so that if there was a, an ambulance that was in worse shape, that there wasn't any sort of visual detriment or negative effect for any of the, either the residences behind us or really anyone driving by on Lincoln Highway. That's just something that we need to, we would need to get an agreement on because we can't unilaterally modify the reciprocal parking arrangement agreements. We allow that property owner to park, well, I guess the present owner of the site will be clear, allows them to park a number of vehicles on this particular property. But I think in an ideal world, any ambulances that would be in more disrepair than others would be a potential to be screened off in a way that would be aesthetically satisfactory to everybody.
So you touched on what my next question would be is, is there, do they envision any kind of security fencing around these ambulances? And given the fact that there is some kind of reciprocal parking arrangement, that how would that work? So I guess the answer is you're not proposing to put a fence around these ambulances.
We're not closing, we're not closing off the lot. There was a question about, you know, could we just split the lot with a fence or something else? And I don't think that that's, that's just not going to be something that's viable, I don't believe. But I think there is a, there is an interest on our end that I would be optimistic that could be worked out for a smaller portion of the parking field because certainly, you know, there's, there would be three, I think the number is three hundred and forty-three spaces on this site and we're not going to need to utilize all the spaces depicted on our plan to be able to hopefully fence off a little portion for affected vehicles. Sergio, I don't know if you can touch on the security component of this on your end to make sure that ambulances are not being stolen. Obviously, you have a vested interest financially in that occurring.
I mean, currently, right now, we have a security system that's twenty-four seven. So we will install a security system at the new facility as well to prevent theft.
What does that mean? Can you expand upon what installing a security system would mean? You mean cameras visually?
Oh, yes, 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 cameras. So right now, we have a sixteen channel system. We actually already upgraded to, I think it's like a forty channel system that we will be, you know, once the facility is built, that we will install cameras there as well.
Well, I mean, my biggest thing is, kind of going back with Brian, is the fact that we're on Lincoln Highway and it's very much of a more of an egress for someone coming down for, just for truck parts. Doesn't really, not even towards the ambulance, just the fact if it's diesel engine or any other compartments. I, it's not Big Oak Road, it's not offset, it's not back in the woods where it's a little more quiet. There's a lot of more temptation on a tire strip. So I'd really truly recommend some type of secure facility for something that has, that may have its, it's honestly have the hood off because of an accident and you have access to parts and just have people come in there. So that would be, I really recommend that have some type of security that can be in place where it's actually lock and key.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So I'm looking at the gray part here. This is the area that you're, where you're going to be and I understand that all the other area you'll be able to park at, but I'm looking at your site specifically. It says that you have twenty-two and then twelve, is that correct, on your site? Is that where you're going to have any ambulances and stuff?
We can, we have a site plan that I can share my screen if you'd like and we can go through. We did add to the plan some details to show where different types of parking would be proposed.
Okay. If anybody has any specific questions for how the operation works?
No.
Then we'll, we'll ask Mr. Fearvani to jump in.
I just have one more question in operations. How, what's the percentage of actual refurbished, rebuild, service work versus keeping ambulances for sale on site? What's your percentage about that?
I would say it's sixty-five, you know, percent refurbished work and the balance is sales.
Okay.
So when you have the sales, how many, how many ambulances do you have on there for sale? Do you have demos there or do you order them as far as with that, as far as the sale purchase, the sales aspect of it?
Or ambulance remounts ready for sale.
I think we estimated, what, we're talking about forty probably at this site, Sergio? Is that the right number?
I think I was asked the question last time and, you know, we have about forty ambulances, vehicles parked outside where we're at right now in Big Oak Road.
That are for sale.
No, well, some of them are for sale. I don't have forty, you know, vehicles that are for sale right now and some are for refurbishing, they're just not ready for sale. Some are for sale that are ready, you know, I think that total is forty, around there.
Okay. Good, good. Okay, Mr. Fearvani, if you'd like to jump in.
Very good. I'm going to try to share my screen, see if this works. Can everybody see the screen?
Nope.
Nope. Yeah.
And now you can?
Good.
So you can see the screen, right?
Yes.
Okay, very good. The one thing, as, as we all know, is that's unique about this property is that the infrastructure of the parking lot, the utilities, the stormwater system is already in place. I don't know how far back everyone goes, but I flipped to the existing plan that was prepared in two thousand. First, the site was developed in nineteen eighty-nine. There was a, a building to the right and there was one, that lot was approved of the parking lot. Then, and, and that was in nineteen eighty-nine. In two thousand, there was a parking lot expansion proposed and that parking lot was built on the subject tract of this application. That actually has one hundred and seventy-two spaces on it. And the original piece with the, the building on it had a hundred and fifty-one for a total of three hundred and twenty-three spaces. At the time that this plan was created, that, that office building, it converted to an office, perhaps it was something else before, has fifty-two thousand square feet of usable area in there and per code of four per thousand required two hundred and eight spaces, which leaves a hundred and fifteen left. So essentially it had a hundred and fifty-one on its parcel and then I actually would use fifty-seven from, from our tract to make up the two oh eight. So that was.
And we're trying, and Vince, just a note, we're trying to be upfront of, rather than come in and say, well, we have X number of spaces on, on our lot, which is semi misleading our neighboring parcel owner secured approval at that higher number than what they just have on their property. So that when we went through this process, we were trying to account for, you know, not creating a non-conforming condition on their lot, which led to us building additional spaces. I just wanted to insert that.
Right, so for, for them back in two thousand to get the two hundred and eight required spaces, they actually built the, the other half of the parking lot, which had a hundred and seventy-one spaces. So they actually built the infrastructure for the entire development for both lots. They only really need to share fifty-seven spaces from the hundred and seventy-two that are on our parcel. It leaves a hundred and fifteen spaces left for us. Now, first, when we looked at this, we had the fifteen and our use doesn't exist in the ordinance, so we were with Sergi trying to account for the actual employee count and number of vehicles and spaces that we would need. So we had the fifteen employees and the thirty visitors and a hundred and fifteen spots left over, which gave us seventy spaces for storage of, of inventory vehicles. And then we added parking along the, the west and the north and we lost a few spaces for ingress with overhead doors. Turned out to be that we added another nineteen spaces so that we had a hundred and fifteen plus nineteen, which is now a hundred and thirty-four spaces that we can use. I'm going to flip back to sheet number one for a second. As a matter of fact, I'm going to go to sheet three because it has some delineations of the parking areas and I'm going to zoom in on that for a minute. So we have what we feel is adequate parking for the use. I, I'd like to point out that at a hundred and thirty-four spaces with the extra spaces we added, that would even be compliant if this thirty thousand square foot building were an office. If it were an office of thirty thousand square feet, it would require four per thousand, a hundred and twenty spaces. So we're not building a white elephant building. There's parking there to account for that size building, no matter what the use is. And even if you look at the impervious coverage on the lot, it's nineteen percent where I believe thirty percent is allowable. And the impervious cover is sixty-eight percent where seventy percent is allowable. So we're not overbuilding the site. In fact, this, this site was actually envisioned to have this type of building on it. Just to continue, in terms of stormwater management, as I said, the parcel was developed and approved with stormwater to handle the parking. We're going to have to evaluate that stormwater system to see whether it meets all the conditions and warrants that, you know, have transpired over the years. And we'll definitely do so and remodel the system and, and we'll, we'll amend it and enhance it if need be to meet the current codes. But all the utilities are in place, sanitary, water, storm sewer, parking. So it's an unusual site in that respect. There's also buffering that exists and I'll show another exhibit for that. Just to, you can probably see on this exhibit, there's overhead doors in the lower corners. I'll zoom in a little bit. You can see the overhead doors where we're going to lose a couple of spaces, same on the south and on the east. You can see them, there's three overhead doors here. Your final architectures aren't done yet, but we have nine overhead doors for, you know, ingress and egress with the vehicles that'll be repaired. And I'll zoom in a little bit here. And I'll show you how we were looking to arrange the parking spaces. The employee parking would be up along, new parking, up along the, the west and the north would be display vehicles all the way across. You see the couple, there's twelve here and there's twenty here, display vehicles. So they would be parked along Lincoln Highway.
The vehicles that are in good, that, that aren't going to need any repair, you know, the, the vehicles that you would want displayed for traffic passage.
Yes, these are the finished vehicles that, that are completely restored and they look nice. They're, they're vehicles for sale or vehicles that are completed, what we would call display vehicles. So what you would see as you pass this site, whether from, you know, the, the Lincoln Highway or the North Olds Boulevard, you would see employee parking and you would see nicely finished display vehicles. The inventory of vehicles, as we stated earlier, as Mike stated, would be parked neatly in the inventory area and that would be in between the two buildings. And there are landscaped areas here where if we needed to, we would keep the aisles open, of course, and keep the vehicles in the parking spaces. But I could see easily with this grassy areas, we could fence off an area. If we had vehicles that were really in, in disrepair with no hoods or prevented some kind of vandalism, it would be easy to, to add fencing and the gate in a certain section, like the area that I'm encircling right here, for example, could be easily fenced off with gates and lights and security and, and be separated from the parking flow if need be. And we can address that maybe further down the road.
And I would say that this, this is fungible. This is us attempting to be responsive to any township or neighbor concerns. So, you know, we're not wedded in saying this is absolutely what the final design has to be. It's just a concept that we think would be appropriate. But if the township and the neighbors indicated we thought some other design was more beneficial at the site, we would be willing to work with them to accommodate that too.
Absolutely. Yeah, this, this will be evaluated as we go through the land development process for a lot of different reasons and enhancements. But overall, we think that, you know, looking at the site, that'll have a, a very minor impact on any of the surrounding areas in, in terms of traffic or, or visibility. I can go down again to another exhibit where I have the existing features, this is an aerial exhibit, to show that there are buffer plantings along the, the area where the two zoning districts are adjacent to each other. You can see them along the rear of the access drive, along the rear of the residential properties. Now, of course, we'd be more than willing to review the existing vegetation for its character and its health and whether we could amend or supplement that buffer and, and we would be doing so. So I think that buffer will be enhanced with our development, but you can see there is some vegetation. And you can see the existing parking lot that we discussed in place and accurately represented by the existing features plan from two thousand. But they will also be performing an ASBIL survey to certify the stormwater system that exists underneath. So back to what we had is our sheet one. And I think we can, we have addressed most of the concerns. We do have a letter from Joe Jones, the townster engineer regarding the, you know, the merits of, of the subdivision and the impacts. And I think we've addressed most of them. I don't know if we want to go through that letter.
If you, I'd like to just take a step back and just the operations. I have two more questions as we were talking through, it kind of popped in my head. The first one would be, with this move and this expansion, would there be an increase in number of jobs from your current status?
We're going, Sergio, what, eight to fifteen? Is that the?
Right, so right, right now, we have eight. We're expecting, you know, fifteen.
And with that, would there be any plans or expansions also in the fire services? Brian is, would you go and perform any maintenance outside of emergency vehicles? I can understand like a chief's vehicle or a special service pickup truck, can understand that with the ambulance and working through that with the emergency lighting, but would you wouldn't go in any other commercial type truck? But you wouldn't go in any other commercial type truck repair, would you?
Focus is only on ambulances right now and we don't have any other plans to get into anything else.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess if you'd like to go through Joe's engineer review letter, obviously there's some zoning issues that he's pointed out here.
Okay, if I look at the letter, the first comment, proposed use is permitted by conditional use only and we did go through that process and we're still in the middle of the conditional use process. The second comment, the plans must be revised, indicates proposed building height. What we're envisioning right now is a single-story dwelling with perhaps a two-story office tower that you can see in the center of the exhibit here. And essentially using the architectural design of the facade to be compatible with the other building on the other side of the parking lot that we share the parking lot with. But the final architecturals, of course, or even perimeter architecturals aren't in progress yet until we get through the conditional use process.
But it's a will comply, we'll be under the maximum building height.
Yeah. The third comment was the variance that we were granted. We were granted two variances, one for the building setback and the other for the parking setback and essentially just to match the design, 75-foot setback. And there's a 22-foot setback up along the frontage road of Lincoln Highway in this area, 22-foot setback opposed to 30. Let's see. Waste disposal was a comment. I'm going to switch exhibits, go down to exhibit number three. Talking about the requirement to have a screened dumpster on the site. And if we were to look at the aerial or, you know, drive-by if you're familiar with the site, the existing dumpster for the other building is in this location right here where I'm pointing that with the magnifying glass. And so if we were to match what they did, we would have a dumpster in this location. But I think what would be better in consideration of the neighbors is to have the location in this corner up here. But again, this would be subject to a land development review. That would be, could be a screened dumpster in that corner that would have easy 90-degree access and could be screened from the streets. It's far away from the residences and close to the buildings. I think that might work well.
Will there be a recycling dumpster as well for metal?
Yes, absolutely. I think that might be the area, but again, that would be subject to review during land development. And that was H5. The applicant should address architectural finish again, that's a will comply and we will do that at the appropriate time. The next comment was a zoning variance for front building setbacks and that was received at our last zoning hearing board. The buffer comment, 38-1, buffer between high and commercial, existing non-conformity, it's advisable to provide buffer plantings where nonexistent and where possible along this property line. As I said, we will definitely evaluate the health and the density of all the existing buffer plantings on the entire site and do our best to make sure that they're enhanced.
Yeah, and that would be something, again, as we go through the land development process, I think that would be an easy overture to be able to make to the neighbors there that we would, you know, enhance the buffering on the property boundary where it's feasible.
And I think the next two comments also relate to screening and buffering again, which we will definitely address during land development. See, there's, the one, this comment, 20942P2, there appears to be a loading area proposed along the south facade of the new building, which is opposite residential properties, where this requirement would be applicable for screening. And I believe we're referring to the new overhead doors, it's not really a loading area or a loading dock, but overhead doors that would provide access. So they would open, the vehicles would drive in and the doors would be closed. But we will be definitely enhancing the buffer in this area. And I think that's one of the areas where the existing vegetation is the thinnest. So we'll definitely make a good impact on that area. But there is really no loading docks proposed as a part of this. There's, next comment was driveway width of 25 feet required by Falls Township Code. We have 24 feet in this area and we can definitely make that 25 feet and we can make the appropriate adjustments. So that'll be a will comply.
Do you believe you have enough egress if you're going to flatbed an ambulance or bring one of the larger wreckers in to be able to maneuver through those aisles with that greenage and everything else that's there?
Are you talking about in this area right here with these overhead doors?
I'm talking about in the front and the back to kind of wheel around. If you're bringing in a truck that's being towed behind or then it's even longer, especially if you're going to get him inside or wherever that is, come in, drop the truck and come around, would it make more sense to put a 360 in there so the trucks can come out instead of the frontage up top just for egress and even a situation where we have emergency response?
Right, yeah, we're going to have to, we'll take a look at turning templates, you know, as we go through the process and we may make some, you know, design changes to accommodate larger vehicles and circulation. We have some areas where you can come straight in, you know, with a long drive and come straight into the building, but we will be, you know, using some templates to look at different scenarios and different circulation patterns.
And there's no other plans, no other entrances, other than that one down bottom that, to come on site, you're going to use that one?
Yeah, at this stage, we have the entrance here and then, and we also, you know, have the entrance to the parking facility. So we have two entrances here and then one to North Olds. And then, of course, there's one out in this area as well.
Yeah, you can't make a left there, though.
Right, right. Yeah, at this stage, that's what we're looking at for the ingress and egress. But, you know, that's, again, that'd be subject to change as we go through.
So not only what John was talking about, unloading towed vehicles or damaged vehicles, but as far as unloading materials for repairs, you know, doors, windows, cars, whatever car parts get delivered, it needs to be some kind of loading area so we're not parked in the middle of the driveway there unloading.
Oh, and this area here so we can come off and unload?
Right.
Yeah, we'll definitely have to take that into account. I mean, we can, well, even if we were to use the rear area, but we'll have to look at maybe, maybe some alterations in this area, something we can take into account. And we'll talk to Serge and see what kind of materials he needs, what type of vehicles that have to come in, you know, we can make some adjustments.
Wait, so I have a question, because just what was just brought up. So if you have a wrecker come in with an ambulance behind it off of North Olds Boulevard, is it my understanding you're going to have to drive all the way down to where the white elephant is and then come through their parking lot where all their cars are to come into your building? Or are you going to be able to make that turn and go right into your building with a wrecker and an ambulance behind it?
Well, we could, well, there's a couple options too. I mean, we could come in, if we're coming down North Olds Boulevard and we're coming in in this direction, we could modify this area of our parking so that we could come in and maybe use this area for loading and for any of these heavy maneuvers and then you can come straight into the building.
Yeah, because I would not want to see a wrecker coming through and then, you know, going through a whole entire parking lot where the white elephant is to come into your, back into your area.
Right, right. Yeah, I think we could modify the areas, you know, in between the buildings in here, perhaps to, you know, allow for the access through the overhead doors and, you know, an area we were talking about before that maybe could be fenced for security, but we could use this area that we can modify this entrance here. I think that might be the easiest if our access came down North Olds and then down into here and we were modifying this area.
We recognize that this isn't a final design, but we're just throwing out our thoughts.
Yeah, absolutely. And if I'm going, then we'll take that into consideration. I'll get with Serge and see what kind of vehicles they use and what their maximum, you know, raises would be required and we'll have the templates on the revised drawings. See, we had, the next comment was an H20 about the, appears a surplus of 20 parking spaces that we were providing around the perimeter of the buildings. And again, we went through the parking numbers and we're adding a net 19 spaces to the site. So we'd have 134 spaces for our specific use. And from the nature of the operations that are proposed, we feel that's more in excess than we'll ever need, even with phase two of this building built and operating. I think we're okay with the parking. 20943, documentation that proposed use will comply with all performance standards enumerated in this section. This is noise and fumes and that type of thing and I think we've gone through that, but we'd have to provide additional assurances as we went through that, make sure that these situations were, you know, taken care of. I think that the performance standards there are all about the noise and fumes, those type of things which we had discussed. Landscaping, sight and screens is H4B, sight and sound screen along residential properties. That's related to the buffer items we discussed and that's a will comply. Existing stormwater management infrastructure has to ensure that it's adequate to handle newly created impervious surfaces, that any existing drainage issues will be addressed through the land development process. And again, we do have a, an existing system. There is a basin on this property. There's conveyance under the parking lot and there's a detention basin right in this area that discharges to the drainage system, the natural drainage path on the six-acre parcel that goes to the, to the stream at the bottom here. So there is a stormwater system in place that was reviewed and approved and constructed, but we will be reevaluating it to make sure that it meets current standards or we will enhance it. Next one is H4D, must ensure adequate lighting. We did discuss lighting as well. I will make sure that there's house side shields that are used and that glare does not incrust on the residential area behind us. I think there was a traffic engineer review as well from Remington Vernix. I don't have a copy of it, but I did see a copy today. I don't think there were any significant issues on there, that'll be will comply. And Mike, I don't know if there's anything on there that we need to address, but I think they're all will comply.
No, I think everything on Remington Vernix is a will comply.
All right, great. I have one question. Can you tell me the size of the vehicles that are being worked on here?
The length of a typical ambulance is anywhere from 19 to 21 feet that we work on.
And how wide are they?
Seven and a half feet.
Park set of the-
Right around seven, between seven and a half feet and eight feet.
So, okay, so the parking spaces out here are 18 feet deep and you just said that you work on vehicles that are 21 feet deep. So you're going to park vehicles that aren't going to fit in the parking spaces?
I think that where the wheel ends, let's say, the back wheels, the back part of the ambulance hangs back, probably three and a half to four feet, which that, when you back in, that will be over the grassy part or the barriers or whatever you want to call that in the parking lot. So then it would be fully in the parking space.
But they wouldn't fit back-to-back because they would both occupy the same grass strip?
I think there's enough, I don't know exactly the dimension of that grass strip, but I think from just going generally there, I think when you do that, there is enough space to be able to fit the full ambulance in the space.
Mr. Jones, you have anything?
Related to that issue or in general, Mr. Chairman?
Is there any public comment?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I meant to ask if you were asking any comment or related to that parking issue. I would just point out that-
Any comment in general, Joe?
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, the islands are nine feet and I guess what he suggested is that he'd need maybe three on each truck. And so I would just caution that there could be landscaping in those islands that we'd have to be careful where they plant, maybe overplant the islands that aren't being utilized for back-to-back. It's my only comment.
All right, thank you. I apologize for interrupting. Was there any public comment?
No public comment.
Any other questions from the board? If there's not, I'll entertain a motion. I will make a motion to recommend not granting conditional use for this application. Tax parcel 13-17-0012, Civ Ambulance Service Facility.
A second.
Second made. Hold the board, please.
Colin Henderson.
Yes.
John Henny.
Yes.
Edward Crowe, yes. Brian Binney.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is Waste Management of Fairless Hills LLC, tax parcel 13-01-001, The application is to rezone and make a map amendment to parcels from MPM Materials Processing Manufacturing to Sanitary Landfill.
Good evening, Mike McGinnis here, down on behalf of Waste Management. I also have with me Bobby Jones from Waste Management and Greg Litzer from Gilmore and Associates. As you indicated, Mr. Binney, this is a rezoning request for Waste. I believe everyone is aware of Waste Management's ownership of the Fairless landfill. Waste is now the equitable owner of approximately 64 acres of a portion of the following parcels, Those parcels are presently zoned MPM and the portion of the parcels which I'm referencing as 64 acres will have a new tax parcel ID assigned to the subdivided portion probably in the coming weeks. We're proposing to rezone that 64-acre portion of the lots from MPM to SL, Sanitary Landfill. This area is contiguous with the land, which is already controlled and operated by Waste Management and would allow for the expansion of the landfill operations on site. With our application, and I don't know, Greg, if you can share a screen here or we can do it in a minute, we submitted an illustration of the approximate parcel location, which we're discussing so the planning commission can see the specific affected area. Before we get into some of the specifics correlated to Waste Management itself, I just wanted to state that we did review before submitting this application, the comprehensive plan for the township. And the comprehensive plan, I would just note, recommends actually consideration on the township's end of a landfill expansion due to the host fee and trash collection services building a reserve to eliminate the need for an increase in taxes in the township. And it's also stated elsewhere, again, that a goal for the particular study area that we're discussing is to utilize underdeveloped parcels in the KTC to develop vacant properties in a way which would, again, create an optimal stable tax base for the township. And furthermore, just to address this quickly, obviously whenever we have to do a rezoning, we need to make sure that the rezoning is not a spot zoning from a legal standpoint and certainly this particular application is not spot zoning due to the proximity of the already existing waste landfill. Specifically, as it relates to Waste Management, I want to highlight a couple items for the planning commission. This landfill, Waste's existing landfill, does not accept hazardous waste that will not change with the rezoning or any landfill expansion in the future at this location. The daily average and maximum volume of waste accepted on site will remain the same. So that is approximately 18,333 tons per day. That will not exceed 20,000 tons. So the volume of waste added to the location will remain consistent with the rezoning. A portion of these parcels presently, right now, with North Point's operation and ownership are in the KOZ. With the change of ownership, they will not be designated as part of the KOZ, so there will not be any tax abatement after Waste takes control and ownership of the affected areas. Environmentally, I know that's important, it's always a question when it comes to any landfill operation, there are a number of areas where Waste has made documented efforts to be a leading business in this particular avenue and specific area and I would just highlight a couple. First, there is a double synthetic line landfill, which is currently in existence and which will remain in existence with any expansion, which meets or exceeds all regulatory standards. There are 16 groundwater monitoring wells on site and Waste has implemented a landfill gas management system, which again, meets or exceeds all applicable state and federal standards for collection and control of landfill gas. The process post rezoning, hopefully- landfill gas. The process, post rezoning hopefully, will be subject to the review, full review from DEP, and there will be a review hearing, and any resident or even a body like this Planning Commission that would like to make comment is authorized to participate in the review hearing that will be held, again, with the DEP. Financially, Waste has been, I think everyone is aware of it, I'm just going to take a minute to highlight some items, a substantial financial contributor to the township, the school district, and the county. In addition to the over one hundred employees, which are employed at the particular landfill location and are local employees, this expansion and rezoning will allow Waste to continue to provide free trash and recycling services to every household dwelling in Falls Township. This will run through approximately 2033. Just to put a very general idea as to the financial benefit, which would be felt by this expansion, Falls is projected to see a financial benefit due to the rezoning over that twelve-year period of approximately a hundred million dollars. Waste has been referring to this internally in some of our conversations as a bridge of sorts, and I think from a financial standpoint as it relates to the township, that's true locally as well. North Point's KOZ burns off shortly after 2033, and at that time, hopefully, we should be looking at a fully approved and improved Keystone Trade Center full of tenants. And when the KOZ terminates, the tax abatement and tax benefits that are associated with that KOZ will then be afforded to the township, the school district, and the county. In the interim, it's our hope that this sixty-four acre expansion can, again, be a bridge of sorts to cover that period of time, so that when the 2033 period burns off on Waste's end, the KOZ is also terminating on North Point's end, so it's a transition from a financial standpoint from Waste's operation and financial benefits that Waste confers in the township to the KOZ going away and the KTC being fully operated and fully full of tenants at that point in time. So from a legal standpoint, with the rezoning, we think it checks all the boxes. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It is not spot zoning, and there is a very clear benefit to the township, both in terms of an employee base and also a financial component, which is very well documented, that we think will serve to both benefit Waste, the community, the residents from a trash collection standpoint, and the township from a financial standpoint, a significant financial standpoint over the next twelve years as a result of any potential expansion here. So with that, I would like to turn it over to, I think Bobby would like to go over a couple items as the district manager of the site, and then Greg to just do a bit of an overview of what he's prepared tonight. Then we would certainly open it up for questions from the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Go ahead.
All right, Mike, thank you very much for that introduction. First off, I'd like to thank Chairman Binney and the members of the, of the commission here for their time tonight to present. This, this project, as, as Mike talked about, we look at it as a bridge project for us operationally, as well as financially for the township and the other taxing bodies in the county. This, this project here is an expansion of an existing landfill. It's going to amount to less than thirty percent of the existing footprint that we currently have permitted as the Fairless landfill and will be contiguous to the current site. So it will not be a separate operation. It will be contiguous to the operation that we're currently involved in now down there. So we're going to roll right into this from the, from the permitted area that we're already filling, and hopefully, you know, with your blessing, we could roll right into this expansion area and, and allow us to get where we need to go, looking at options for our next, you know, next business, options moving out of this area, or possibly some diversionary tactics that we might use in place when we're done filling this site. But when you look at this map for the KTC, this is the last available piece of property that we, we can see can be used for landfill site down at that location at Fairless. So we, we ask for your cooperation with this project.
Mr. Jones, I have two quick questions. So do you envision that there's enough fill material locally to cap this particular expansion? And are you losing your ability to transport vehicles through the mill property now that North Point has taken over? And are we going to see more trucks out on the roads because of that, or have you made some kind of arrangement?
No, no, what the, good question, Brian. What, what we have, we already have an easement in place that was put in place years ago with US Steel to connect our mining sites. We have three gravel mining sites for, for construction materials to support the landfill. It's connected with a, approximately, I think, a two-point-eight mile easement roadway through the steel mill that has been, you know, that easement's being honored by North Point. We, we work with them to make sure that that was secured, and there's no issues there. So trucks, traffic will not change at all for this, this project. It'll be similar as it is today.
And you, the other part of that was, do you have enough material locally for, to finish this project out?
Yeah, yeah, we did a balanced reserves on the three mining sites that we have and versus the construction project ahead of us, if we get this expansion, if we're successful. And we do have the, the sand and gravel reserves required to construct this fully and cap, and cap the entire site.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Is there any questions from the board for Mr. Jones? Nope, okay, great. Guess if you just want to briefly go through this four comments here, I'm sure they're all zoning issues, so they're all will comply, so I think I just answered it, right?
Yes.
Is there, Mr. Jones, you have any comments?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any public comment?
No public comment.
If there's no other questions from the board, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept zoning change application from M and P to S and L for KTZ Southport Strip Parcel Subdivision One, Ben Fairless Drive, TMP number thirteen dash zero five one dash zero zero one, thirteen dash zero five one dash zero zero one dash zero one six, thirteen dash zero five one dash zero zero one dash zero one seven, and thirteen dash zero five one dash zero zero one dash zero two three, zoned MPM, Falls Township Bucks County, Pennsylvania, JEA, project number LD two one dash two two.
I'll second.
Pull the board, please.
Colin Henderson.
Yes.
John Henny.
Yes.
Edward Crow.
Yes.
Brian Binney.
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good evening.
Great, thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Last item on our agenda is approval of minutes from October twenty-sixth.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as printed.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.